Good morning, everybody. We start our meetings with a pledge. I'm going to have Julie start.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I almost started that way too. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the August 10th, 2023 Rockham County Commissioners Meeting. In the room, we have Chuck Nickerson, we have Leila Pillah, and we have Julie, we have Commissioner Godu, and myself in the room. And on Zoom, we had Commissioner Coyle, we have Jude Gates, we have Pat Conway, we have, I can't see the... We have Jason, we have the Sheriff's Office, Jason Henry, Allison Kevakovsky, and I don't know who's the second box up to the left in the middle. Can't really see her.
Karen Anderson.
Karen Anderson.
The town administrator from Hampton Falls.
Oh, okay, okay, welcome.
Thank you.
We have former Commissioner, we have former Commissioner Tom Tomorello with us as well. And I believe I've got everybody. And we have Jason Smith that just popped on. So I know Kathy Stacy's in a meeting, so she's excused. And we're going to start with our P open for the ice maker and water dispensers.
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Opening for the reach-in refrigerator?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
We actually have a physical opening.
This is the next one?
Commissioner Godu, could you kindly?
Show the goods. Okay, there it is.
We go. Physical opening. I don't even need a knife. And we have our P for night, ice maker and water dispensers. Two coffees in envelopes. We'll put those on file and review them.
Good. Thank you. So we're gonna go to the refrigerated, refrigerated merchandiser?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposal, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Not on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Remodel resident dining and main kitchen?
I move to authorize the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion?
Yeah, I know. I'm okay.
You all set?
I'm picking up at the reward. Thanks.
Okay. On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Concealable armor?
I move to authorize the High Chair to review, evaluate the proposals, and return with a recommendation.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Supply and install PBD flowway vertical turbine pump?
I move to award the proposal to, for supply and install PBD flowway vertical turbine pump to Hampstead Area Water Services Company for an amount not to exceed $65,911 as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're on to the consent agenda?
Um.
Meeting minutes.
Right. I move to approve the August 3rd, 2023, public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any additions, subtractions, or any discussion on that? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Onto accounts payable list?
Yes, I move to approve the August 10th, 2023, accounts payable list total of $1,898,850.50.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes.
Discussion, Commissioner Godu?
Um, this is relative to the Harvey warrant for payment. There are two items on it that I have no idea what they're for. And they should be sending us invoices on these so that we know what they are. And they have not included that in the package. Richard D. Barletta and Associates for $1,376.37 and Kirk Rennels for $1,595. Does anybody know what those are for? And do we have copies of that invoice someplace else?
Chuck, please, please, isn't that?
I mean, I don't know inherently what explicitly those two items are for.
Okay.
I would have to guess they're probably subcontractor, you know, items that were submitted.
Yeah.
You know, related to earthwork in some way.
So we think Leila did send us a breakdown of items in a, a lot of these, a lot of them had headings. Is that the same sheet that I'm thinking about? The meeting that June and Chuck had, we get a rundown.
Oh, minutes.
Yeah.
Construction meeting minutes?
Yeah, we're gonna have to put that show with it.
Nope, I read those. I read the warrant. These are questions that should be answered. And just, just for the record, very specifically, in our contract with Harvey Construction, it specifically says that with each application for payment, the construction manager shall submit invoices or invoices with check vouchers attached. That's not the whole paragraph, but that's the essence of it. We've already agreed that they're going to give us these invoices. This is nothing that is brand new that I'm bringing up. I'm just asking to go along with the contract, to enforce the contract, and make sure. And now, these are small numbers. I, I agree, you know, in the grand scheme of things. But it's just an example, and I'd like to get them on the right setting so that moving forward, we're not having long discussion about why we're not getting the right information each meeting. Harvey is great company, and there's no doubt that they'll be able to provide all this without any trouble. I just want to make sure that they, that they do, and I get a chance to look at it.
Okay. Yeah, Jude, you wanna chime in?
The first item Bartlett and Associates, it is under temporary office, and I believe that was for survey work. Bartlett is the surveyor on the project. I didn't quite catch what the second one was, Commissioner. I believe that it's the, the, the construction fence at the bottom of that driveway. And I think it was annotated on the last app insert. I don't have it right in front of me. But I do believe it's the fence. And we had that in the first one.
That was Herc Rennels.
Small two.
Yeah, they're renting that fence. That construction fence at the bottom of the driveway, the big fence.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not gonna hold up this and vote against it at the moment. These are small numbers. But I would like to get a copy of the invoices when these warrants are submitted. I'm expecting that they'll be complete moving forward.
These.
Further comments? Commissioner Coyle?
I believe these things are represented. There might be some misunderstanding on your part, Commissioner Godu.
There's no misunderstanding on my part.
Well, nice.
Well, we have, I mean, I think we just, we had a long public meeting last week, discussion about this. And, you know, we reached an agreement about what we were going to have. And, you know, it appears at this point, we're going back to the well on it. But, you know, I think this is just yet another example of Jude having such a handle on everything that, you know, this is the checks and balances system. So I think we're comfortable moving forward with what we have.
With all due respect, this is not good check and balances. Because I can't even get an answer for what these things are, right, at the moment. And the reason I can't get an answer is because Harvey did not include it, the invoice in, in the, in the warrant. And they're supposed to include, by contract, they're supposed to include the invoice in the warrant. I just want to see what it is. I'm not, you know, obviously, nobody else is looking at it because we don't have it here. So this is a contractual agreement between the county and Harvey. It's already been, I know we discussed it at length. I wasn't completely aware. I hadn't reviewed the contract closely enough when we had that discussion, or else I would have just told them that they've already agreed to provide this information to us, and I'm expecting to receive it.
The description is in the packet that we received from? I can look at it.
Okay, tell me, tell me what Richard D. Barletta Associates invoices.
So this back and forth, you need to be recognized before anybody speaks because you're just going around in circles. So let's, let's try to finish this up and finish this motion, and then we can, yeah. Figure out what we're gonna do moving forward. So. Commissioner Coyle, do you have any last words on it?
I don't. I don't.
Commissioner Godu?
Uh, no, that'll do. I'll, I'm gonna approve this for the moment, you know, with their goodwill. But I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's not for a popcorn machine or something inappropriate. I, I just want to know what it is, and I'm hoping I will, and expecting to get the details on warrants moving forward.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Now we're on to, so we, in our packet, we get the weekly recruitment report, which is informational. I don't know if anyone has any comments, any commissioners, any comments on that information?
Yeah, I'll just make one comment. Autumn is doing a fantastic job, and she should keep up the good work.
Yeah. Okay, so let's move on to liaison updates. I'm gonna, last week, I went to, so I'm gonna go to Commissioner Godu.
Okay, well, Allison and Jason Smith and I visited Merrimack County Daycare Center and Nursing Home. And I just want to compliment them for their thoughtful questions that they asked. We learned a lot about how they are operating daycare, and it was a very productive meeting. We have another meeting in a couple of weeks at Easter Seals to learn more. I'm gaining a lot of knowledge about how some other places are dealing with daycare issues. And more importantly than anything else, the kids were really cute. And it was fun to go to the daycare. I haven't been to a daycare in a long time. And so, yeah, they did a great job. And then we got a chance to tour the absolutely beautiful nursing home that they have in Merrimack County. I thought we were the prevent facility. But they had an awful nice cafe, and so, yeah, it was, it was really excellent. But it was good, it was good information. It was good to see what some of the out county people are doing. They were very friendly and helpful.
Anything else? That's it. Commissioner Coyle?
Yes, good morning. So the, speaking of cute, daycare potential participants, we have a guest on the. Over at the jail, the population is 150. There's ongoing projects. And most significantly, what we're seeing is there are currently 18 women housed at Carroll County. We're seeing an uptick in the number of females being housed. So as the months go on, we'll play, playing careful attention to that line and see how we're doing over there. Because it is costly to house our female inmates, so stay tuned. Over at Long Term Care, and, you know, we are having a bit of an outbreak. We, there's, in the assisted living facility with COVID, I think it's not inconsistent with what generally their anticipated uptick in number of COVID cases. You know, all the research I've read said August, beginning in August, and upticking from there. So, you know, every, there are protections in place, and we'll continue to do what we've been doing for the past few years and successfully doing so. And that brings me to our infection preventionist, Lisa Hewitt, who just got recognized for her great work with infection control and some research and presentation that she had. And she was recognized in a, one of the, in a magazine for her work. We have the Resident and Family Picnic, August 17th, so that's a nice event. And followed by the Employee Picnic or Barbecue on the 18th to celebrate another, another year of deficiency free. Hey, I'll leave the reins to Chuck to talk about finance. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna be brief and let my department head speak during their, their session, and they'll get very busy. But we did want to mention, so you mentioned Lisa Hewitt. Congratulations to her. I'm never ever gonna forget the 52 weeks or whatever, whatever amount of time that they had to stuff a tube tip in my nose on each nostril for weeks on end. And she was very good at making me feel comfortable. So good for her. I mean, that's, there's a lot of that in the previous that it went through. So that's number one. And two, fentanyl's making, it's, it's rearing its ugly head again. There's been more reports of deaths, fentanyl deaths, uptick in Manchester particularly. So this is, the surge is really not going away. And, you know, I know the Sheriff's Department works in and here with the federal partners and state partners to try to get that stuff off the street. But it looks like, you know, we're, we're fighting that battle continually, and, you know, that's, that's tough. But anyway, hate to see those numbers go up. And I think that's, that's it for me. So let's move on to the equitable sharing agreement and certification for County Attorney's Office.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2023 equitable sharing agreement and certification, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the county attorney.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. And bid waiver request, TVC Systems?
I move to approve the TVC Systems three-year pricing proposal and bid waiver request in the amount of $66,200 for support services on the biomass boiler plant as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this motion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Change order request?
I move to approve a change order request for Warren Street Architects Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $8,910 for the traffic study report and recommendations as required by New Hampshire DOT relative to the driveway permit for the new municipal building, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, we're on to Finance Office, offer grant applications and payment review discussion. So we're gonna discuss all that. I would like Chuck to give us a brief summary on what he's provided us.
So basically, I did three different, I broke down the three different separate ARPA grant programs that, that the county is taking applications for. The first one, which is just a one-page, is for the ARPA, for our local business assistance program. So for those industries or companies that fall under the hospitality overall, you know, industry umbrella that operate within Rockham County, we opened it up for, you know, allocated 501,000. That basically broke down to 167,000 per commissioner district. And then most of the applicants that we've had have been restaurants for the most part. As you can see, there's been a few different event venues, such as the two different separate entities for Tupelo Music Hall. But again, most of them have been for restaurants, and we, there are two that had just come in sporadically after the last series of awards that were done back near the end of calendar year 2022. So that would be Kotet Tokyo Japanese Steakhouse and 50 East Dairy Road, which does business as the East Dairy Tavern. So each one was asking for 25,000. This is just a per negative financial impact of COVID. And so whether it's they needed to get PPE or they need, or their sales are, you know, negatively impacted by COVID as well because obviously, you know, decreased the number of patrons during COVID. That's why they're asking for the funds. So those are the only two that we had received since that last round of awards near the end of calendar year 2022.
Thank you for that.
In this, in this sector.
Yeah. Commissioner Godu?
Yeah, I, I'm looking for a clarification of what the fund balance is and what's been already allocated and
Okay, so.
essentially how much money we have that we should be distributing.
Okay, so the grant total is 501,000, which breaks out evenly 167,000 for each commissioner district. So that's the amount that you see under each of the commissioner district pieces at top right. And then I do summarize everything at the very bottom right, where in total, 328,000 has been requested in total, 105,000 awarded. The balance is 396,000 because that's taking the overall 501,000. You know, the total of all three commissioner district amounts, less the 105 awarded, is a 396 for the balance.
Okay, so we have $396,000 that we ought to be distributing. And we have until 2026 or how old we have?
So the, the federal government, in this case, it would be, we would have to give out the money before the end of calendar year 2024. So we have till the end of next December in this case. Because there's no performance period that is tied to this kind of project. It's just that the money has to go out. And then we simply just follow up with the organizations to see, okay, you asked for the money because you, you are using it to help, you know, fund your payroll, or you're helping to pay for PPP or, you know, cleaning, because, you know, extra cleaning, whatever it might be. And so for this project, it's a simple follow-up. That's only required by the feds. But all that basically has to happen by the end of, of next calendar year.
Okay. Makes sense. All right. Commissioner Coyle, do you have anything you want to touch on? Or you're good with this?
Uh, yeah, I have nothing right now.
Okay. So the next part is the, the ARPA projects update information. So this is gonna be, I had asked Chuck maybe a couple of months ago, just to give us a brief synopsis. As many people know, we have breakdowns of where all the ARPA money gets allocated. And so what I wanted to find out is where, where we're at. You know, what's been spent, what's gone out. And one of the reasons why is because we, you know, we do have an opportunity to reallocate if we need to. And we did go a little bit slow because we wanted to figure out what the building cost was gonna be. And we want to make sure that we were gonna be okay there. So anyway.
Can I, can I back up this one step? So, so I gone over just the local business assistance. We do also have a five, another $501,000. That's for nonprofit financial assistance.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So basically, for, intended for 51(c)(3) organizations, again, negatively financially impacted by COVID for various reasons. Sometimes it's really because of fundraising, obviously decreased, because many of these places couldn't have the fundraising events or sources that we normally would, or governments who are pulling back on, on, you know, providing funds to them as well. So that, that almost works similarly to the assistance to the hospitality industry because it's the same, like qualifying factors. And again, at the very last page, it'll show that we've had almost 850,000 requested. We've rewarded 184,000. There's a balance of 317,000 on that. And we, on that one, we've had like the most applications since our last round of awards near the end of calendar year 2022. There's about, I think about eight or so that are in here. Then the last piece is the, what I call the sub-awards to nonprofits. This is, these are those organizations already providing services to those communities already disproportionately affected by COVID. This is mine to either further or additionally support what they're doing out in the community. And I'm just bringing that up in detail because Town of Hampton Falls is online right now because they actually submitted a sub-award application on here that's on the last page. And in fact, they're the last entry. So the, the third one that's colorized here on the last page, 303, you'll see Town of Hampton Falls for $12,000. Basically, and this might be part of how we had to unfortunately end our rental assistance program because of the pullback of the feds of the last bit of funding that they had to, you know, pick up some slack, as we've heard before from former Commissioner Tom Bro that, you know, when our program stops, the towns can't. They have to fill in that gap that's kind of left behind. And so there's a couple of households that are being assisted by the Town of Hampton Falls, and they had only intent, budgeted for 2,000. But the overall costs are gonna be over 14 on assisting these two families. And the goal was to, to provide, their request was to help, you know, reimburse and provide assistance above what they had budgeted for, for these two households, to hopefully get them through to near winter time where hopefully they could secure more permanent housing, and the town would no longer have to provide assistance. So that's why I'm just preempt that one.
Can you give, what's our overall numbers on what we have in a balance? And would it be helpful, at least, I mean, to me, it seems like making, allocating this money towards Hampton Falls would be reasonable and prudent and good use of the money. And I think we have quite a bit left in the sub-receipients, though I don't have the spreadsheet.
Yes.
Maybe we could just make an award?
So even for that District 1, because that's what Hampton Falls falls under, there is 674,000 remaining just for that commissioner district.
Okay, so Commissioner Chiricello?
Yeah.
You know, we all are acutely aware of the impact, housing impact and through our rental assistance program. And it seems that this allocation of $12,000 to assist in housing where we were sort of cut short on rental assistance would be a reasonable and prudent and good use of money. And I'd like to, I'm asking that you entertain a mo, we entertain a motion to make this award.
Uh, I mean, are you making a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. So basically, any more discussion?
Oh, we have to make a motion, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, well, we should start with this discussion. So I'll just finish that before we move to the moment. Otherwise, we can, we can do it in a lot of time when we're looking at everything, but that's fine. If you want, if you want to make a motion, we'll see where it carries.
Sure. I move to award $12,000 to, under the sub-recipient category for ARPA programs to Hampton Falls to assist in their resident housing needs.
Second. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
I, I'm in favor of, I'll definitely support this. I'm just wondering if we might get a little bit clarification from the administrator that has, has joined us.
Where's, can't find her. Oh, there she is on the top there. Did you want?
Yeah, absolutely. And I certainly do appreciate it. Hampton Falls obviously has the one hotel that housed many, many people
Oh, yeah.
from around the county. And the people that we've had to assist, we're down to one family now, weren't from Hampton Falls. So the Hampton Falls taxpayers were the ones assuming this burden, even though they were from Nashville or Salem, Manchester. And those communities rightfully were the ones that were supposed to be able to help them. But because of situations or their housing previously, those communities denied them. So based on the statutes and the humanitarian part of it, Hampton Falls stepped up, and we have been providing food, gas, along with housing for several people. At this point, we have well overspent our budget. This 12,000 would be a huge help. It doesn't touch the amount that we've already even spent, but it's so appreciated.
Yeah. So I, I'll just make a couple of notes. And I can, I, you know, I'm gonna support this. The only thing is, is I, I do have a concern because we do have 36 other communities that are probably maybe in a similar situation if they're over their budget. The welfare laws of the state are very specific. That, and as you mentioned, you know, it's not anything North Hampton's fault. If someone, if another town comes over and has to utilize that hotel, it's, I mean, I've, I've seen this going on for many, many years where people navigate to where the services are. So I do have a concern that we, we're gonna, we're gonna set a precedent. And that when we do, other communities are going to start asking for the money. Now, you may feel that that's the right way to go, spend that, but just to let you know, I mean, as I mentioned, the welfare laws. as I mentioned, the welfare laws are very specific that you, you can't deny anybody these, and maybe some pressures on, on the town, but I think everyone shares in that. But anyway, I wanted to point that out. Um. And so you don't expect to come back for more afterwards or what? You don't know, obviously.
I don't expect to have to come back for more at all. Um, this is, I've been working diligently, um, between our police fire and my office. Have we put in hundreds and hundreds of hours to help relocate people? Um, hopefully we've tried to put them back in the communities they originally came from.
Yeah.
To, because that's where their services were, that's where their families were. Um, that has been our goal is to try and get them as close to where they lived before. Um, there's no Hampton Falls residents that even participated in the program to receive assistance. These were all residents from other parts of the state that were put in Hampton Falls.
Yeah, okay. Um, so we have a motion on the floor. I'm gonna do a roll call now. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Uh, and I will vote yes.
Thank you so much.
So we'll approve that and, um, we'll get that out to Chuck. We'll, we'll get that money out to you.
And just a quick follow up, there is a error in the form I just saw for the grand total. Um, there's not just four hundred forty eight thousand available. It's actually two point one three million under, under this, uh, this program.
Okay.
And thank you for your efforts, administrator.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. You, you're more than happy to stay for the meeting if you'd like.
I think I've heard enough. Um, I had minutes last night, so I've got minutes and things to put together.
All right. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now going back to, do you want to just give a brief?
Yeah.
We're not going to get into the details of that, but you can let everybody know what you provided.
Okay, so I provide what is basically an overall rundown of all ARPA projects that the county, um, has in process. Uh, we, we did have initial allocations by the ARPA committee from two August ago. And, uh, that committee did, um, propose allocations amongst many different projects. Uh, many different expenditure categories that treasury has. Um, and it covered all of the almost sixty point two million dollar award by the feds. Uh, subsequently, what happens is that the board of commissioners are the true one, true body to actually approve the projects. And so far, um, of that sixty, not quite sixty point two million federal award, um, about fifty eight point three have been approved by the commissioners for projects. Um, only five point three million has been spent because obviously we've got, um, much monies are obligated but not spent towards the new municipal building.
Right.
Um, so that's thirty three million plus of that fifty eight point three million approved. Um, and we're still in the relatively, you know, early stages of that, that project, you know, likely we've been making some really good progress recently.
Right.
Um.
And which is why, just to, just to add on top of that, that's why it's very important that we stay on schedule because if we lose that money, uh, then the taxpayers are going to have to pay back and that's not what we really want. So it's, that's why it's important to make sure that this project stays on a timely time planning pattern.
The good news is that we do have, the money is obligated for that in the federal sense. Now it comes down to performance period.
Yeah.
And for that, at least we have till December thirty first of two thousand twenty six.
Right.
Um, and included in that, that fifty eight point three million is obviously, you know, the roughly ten million amount for the uh, solar array as well.
Yeah.
Um, for the actual expenses, uh, we had five point, not quite five point four million. Um, a fair amount of that was actually from employee premium pay. That project was fully complete in early April. So that is, uh, that is fully done. Um, as far as other projects that are power of the fifty eight point three million that the B O C has approved, um, is almost four million for countywide HVAC improvements.
Right.
Um, we've had some delays in, uh, in getting good bid, uh, respondents for that. Um, I think we, Jude was working to break it up in the separate RFPs.
Yeah, and so that's where I have a concern, obviously, on the projects that since we were upgrading the water lines, we were doing the HVAC. You know, I don't know if all the supply chain issues have gone, you know, gotten better or not. I don't know, but, uh, obviously it's important that we're on top of these projects because if there's, there is a, there is a issue, we're going to have an issue, so. Um, but anyway.
Yeah, so it's just many, many projects. I mean, it is probably about, about forty plus individual projects actually on here.
So what I'm going to do is because Commissioner Coyle is, does not have that sheet in front of her, um, Commissioner Godu just received it and needs some time to digest it. We're gonna.
I have that.
Oh, you have it now? Okay.
No, no, the one with the, I mean, our overall, I've been, yeah, I've studied. We got it in our, in our packet. Leila attached it.
Yeah, yeah, but the one, the other one that you don't have, we don't, we're gonna have further discussion next week, so there's a little bit more time to digest it. If that's okay.
Yeah, I, I just have one more question. Um, Chuck, at the bottom of this, it says one million eight hundred ninety five thousand. Is that what has been unallocated to any project? What you're thinking it might go to the new building as extra work that needs to be done?
Exactly, yes. Yes, and, and what will happen too is that as we have, uh, we have one last year of doing a lost, annual lost revenue calculation. Um, how the feds have it, that would, that for us would be, um, calendar year ending this year. And so I, I can't do that calculation until I do the quarterly reporting for the quarter ending twelve thirty one twenty three. That's due at the end of January of next year. Once that's done, we'll have our final known amount that can be allocated for products that fall under the lost revenue or revenue replacement category that we're not beholden to have to worry about Davis Bacon rules for construction stuff, rates like that.
No strings.
So it's gonna, that's right. Basically no strings, you know, um, but so what'll happen is that some of the amounts that we have that are B O C approved towards the building in different categories will partially move over into that. So I, I just have
since I've been working on this daycare, um, potential. One of the things that I have, uh, recognized is that there's going, it's gonna, if, if we were to implement something, there's going to be, there's gonna, funds will be needed to renovate a space or build a space that's proper. Is it potential that this money could go towards that or is that out of?
It's up to the world of, the, the board, board to choose the actual projects.
But from a, so just from a qualification standpoint, it could potentially be used to support renovations.
So, so expenditure category six point one, um, can be used with little to no strings. Well, not, I always say no strings. There, there are some qualifying things you can't spend the money on.
You have a lot more flexibility.
Oh, a whole lot more. Um, it just falls under the same thing. Has to be obligated by twelve thirty one twenty four. Performance period has to be done by twelve thirty one twenty six.
So we have more time to talk about a lot, a lot of different things here, but, um, we'll, we'll take care of that. But, but you have that sheets that you can.
Yeah, there's, I apologize. There's a lot, you know, with the, the three different categories and this overall summary thing. It's still a lot and we continue to have some moving, small moving amounts on some of the projects.
I'll come and visit you and we'll get better.
County cap summary.
So good news on the county cap. So just recently, D H H S, um, published the county caps. Now, the overall net county cap, um, thanks in large part to that for, of members of our own delegation, uh, we're able to keep the overall total of all ten counties cap, um, unchanged for state fiscal year twenty four and twenty five. Uh, but what can happen sometimes is that based, that net cap though is allocated between the ten counties based upon the average three years running, you know, claims, the most recent years, you know, ending with six thirty twenty three. Rockland County was fortunate enough that we, our, our percentage mix actually decreased. And so our allocated net cap, uh, actually went down by four hundred thousand dollars. And so that's really good news because, um, I, I provide the listing of all ten counties and you see that like Hillsborough and Merrimack unfortunately did not have the same experience. Merrimack counties actually went up by two percent. Hillsborough's went up by one percent. And we're, you know, that's, you know, three hundred thousand dollars plus for each of them. So, uh, we were very fortunate. I did, you know, being conservative budgeting, I actually still put in like our allocate, our allocated cap go up by like one percent, which equates to almost two hundred thousand dollars. So the end result is that we already know out of the gates, we're going to have a hundred thousand dollar favorable variance between the cap that was budgeted and the cap we're actually going to experience. So good news. It means that, um, we'll have to, you know, that can go towards not having to utilize as much fund balance as was budgeted. So that's really good news.
Yeah, that is good.
So the good news out of the gate because this is what the state says, we have to pay, there's no way around it. So we're kind of locked in that this six hundred thousand dollar savings.
Yeah.
So.
Any discussion with commissioners on this issue?
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. And did I say thank you? Seriously.
Happy, happy to deliver some good news.
Yeah, we also worked really hard with your, like, with the numbers, you know, to help us to get to where we are. So, thank you.
We're going to go to intergovernmental agreement, uh, we're going to transfer public funds approval.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty four intergovernmental transfer agreement, I G T, with New Hampshire D H H S for a net obligation of nineteen million, two hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars in accordance with RSA one sixty seven, colon, eighteen A, and exhibit A of the agreement and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the senior director of finance.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, any discussion?
Just, just a quick thing.
Yes.
If I can, um, so CMS requires this document to be, um, done with the state of New Hampshire. So this is not an optional item. Without this, we cannot get our quarterly, uh, Medicaid quality improvement program monies and we don't get our pro share.
Okay.
So there's about ten million dollars of revenue.
So nineteen going out, ten coming back? Okay. All right. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes. I vote yes.
Thank you.
Human resources, use of facility policy, which we got last week, um, and I'll, I'll have to send a motion to that.
I move to approve the Rockham County Complex Facility Use Policy and Licensee Agreement Form as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and the Senior Director of Long Term Care Services.
Second, motion's been made. And seconded, is there any discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Um, how do we come up with seventy five dollars as the right number? I didn't, wasn't part of that discussion and.
So I'm, I'm going to let Jude talk about that, I think. Um, no, not Jude. He's Robin's not yet, that's right.
I think Allison needs the determination.
All right, Allison.
Uh, you actually all had discussed it and you felt that seventy five dollars was reasonable. Was it a reasonable approach? Um, because they may be not non-for-profit that you may decide not to, but for those that may use it, it was be, it's a public space. It would be minimal, but seventy five dollars was what you came up with. So I, that's what I just put in there. It doesn't mean it's hard stop fast, but that's kind of, I had taken notes and that's kind of where people had been discussing the amount.
Right. And so that'd be like a setup and tear down using our employees to do that. Um, but as Allison said, you know, we could waive portions of that depending on if it's a light setup, whatever, those are going to come in front of us anyway. So, I think further discussion?
I, I would like to reduce it to fifty dollars. I, I, I don't want to discourage people. I mean, all, all of our the employees, it's not like it's incurring us a lot of extra expense. It's just allocating, you know, some of our employees that are already being paid to go do something that's a little extra and I get that it's extra. I, I, I don't want this to be a burden. This is a public building. Uh, and I, I'd just like to reduce it to fifty dollars would be my opinion. If you, with the other commissioners.
Commissioner Coyle?
I think, I don't, I don't think seventy five is unduly burdensome. We also have in there directly civic and nonprofits are not subject to the fee. So these are not, you know, again, it recognizes that we're, we're trying to make it accessible, but there is cost, just like we have the fee for, you know, any extra time, we might need A V, you know, someone from I T to help. So, you know, again, it's not, I don't think that that fee is a you know, for, to financially benefit from it, but it is just to cover costs. There is cost associated that we're paying employees to do the work, the clean up, the setup. And then the other point I have is I think if there's, if we're finding, we could, there's an opportunity, if we're finding that it does become unduly burdensome, I'm sure our constituents will engage with us and then we can take it up at that point. So I'm comfortable moving forward with the.
Um, I'm gonna, you know, I, I think we've got the flexibility there. We've mentioned that we don't have to charge anything on nonprofits, um, or we'll charge anywhere from zero to seventy five. So I'm good. With the flexibility, I'm really being forward on it. I know there's been a request to use it, so. Uh, I'm fine moving it forward. Um, any further discussion? If, all right, if not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
And, um.
Yes, and I will vote yes. Um, employee retention, engagement ARPA project fund?
I move to approve an employee retention and engagement activity memories ice cream utilizing category two point three five of the ARPA project funds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made. And seconded, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, now we got to. I want to thank Allison for finding a local Rockingham County business to support. Uh, Memories Ice Cream is in Kingston or Hampstead. I forget exactly where they are, but I know they're in Rockingham County and I appreciate you switching from, uh, the other vendor to this vendor.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Uh, amendments to the eight, three, twenty three, and thirty percent engagement ARPA project fund?
Yes, I move to amend the August third, twenty twenty three Employee Retention Engagement Motion Approving Jersey Mikes for third shift and weekender employees to reflect the use of the county's health fund. Five one, five one slash five two, three, one, oh, instead of ARPA project funds category two point three five.
Second, motion's been made. And seconded, any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we are, see, am I, am I right? We're on the department heads?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna go Jude first.
Good morning. I don't have, um, really nothing new to report. Situation normal, keeping everything moving. Robin is down at the water treatment facility today, helping us to, uh, get the data that we need from the P L C for the well testing for well number four. That's why she was unable to make the meeting this morning. And, um, with regard to the ARPA H V A C, we ended up backing up a further step and asking for engineering services. I have two proposals right now, which couldn't be further apart. So I'm trying to um, make them apples and apples. Hopefully I'll have a recommendation for the board on that next week. And just as a point of interest, um, Merrimack County Nursing Home was designed by Warren Street. They did that before they came to the Blaisdell Farnold.
Nice, interesting. They did a good job.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Jude. Yeah, Jason Smith.
Good morning, Commissioner Nurse. Uh, just to follow up, um, this week we had three new positive cases in our assisted living community. Um, our infection control protocols, um, are in place and we are testing again today. Um, no further cases in the nursing home, so that's good. Um, we have partnered with Brookhaven Hospice, who's one of our, um, hospice partners uh, to do an education session on October fifth at four P M for our family members and the general public to learn more about, um, hospice services, palliative care and end of life process. Um, so we'll be hosting that. Um, and as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, we have the family and resident barbecue on the seventeenth. So that'll be a nice event, uh, for community, um, building community. And then, um, just to say thank you for our staff for our deficiency free survey will be the next day on the eighteenth. Um, in addition to that, um, CMS has issued new guidance, uh, for the final rule that will take effect in two thousand twenty four. So we're digging through those new regulatory requirements and seeing what fun I have in store for me over the next few months. Um, thank you very much for signing the podiatry contract. Um, appreciate that as, uh, we have no podiatry services prior for the past three months. Our podiatrist just abandoned us, so, um, I'm excited to get that moving forward. Um, we're having some issues with our mobile X-ray. They're having staffing issues. So if we need to order an X-ray for one of our residents, it's usually taking two to three days, sometimes four days. Um, as you can imagine, sometimes putting someone in an ambulance and sending them to the hospital for an X-ray is, um, just uh, very traumatic and, um, not necessarily the best practice for our residents. Um, so we're going to be looking at possibly, um, we've had numerous conversations with this particular vendor. Um, but again, staffing is an issue in healthcare. Um, so we're going to be looking at a couple of different options as well. Um, continuing to work on the R F P this week, um, for the pilot program to delay or defer institutional care. I don't agree with. I don't agree with the institutional part, but nevertheless, I didn't come up with the title. Um, so we're looking at um, that RFP, uh, the grant writer's on vacation, but we have started it and um, good portion of it's done. Um, and so hopefully, the grant writer will just carry that good work forward when they return. Um, my bright spot of the day, we had a resident um, come visit us for uh, skilled nursing and rehabilitation. And they had such a positive experience, they actually had shirts made um, for the staff.
Wow.
I know it's backwards, it says simply the best Rockingham County Rehabilitation Nursing Center Services. So, just to share, my bright spot is that, you know, even though the challenge is real every day, we do good things here, so thank you.
That's nice, very nice. Thanks, Jason, for sharing that. Uh, Allison.
Good morning. Um, the Jersey mics is underway, the deliver, delivery will be on Friday. I sent those um, ODDs and their second in command and administrative staff information. Julie and Jessica will be doing those deliveries, thank you. The Memories Ice Cream, I thank you for approving that, we have included the third shift and weekenders on that. So, there'll be pre-scooped ice creams of various flavors selections and those will be delivered at the same time. So, everything will be kind of rolling out at the same time and that, that will make, I think, a lot of difference for the third shift and weekenders. The Quiet Room, um, we're hosting an open house today from eleven thirty to one. So, if any of the long-term care staff um, in any of the departments in that building would like to go down from eleven thirty to one to just see it, ask questions, see how it works, some of the stuff that's in there, they should do that. The MDS interviews took place, I'm happy to report that there was a candidate. Um, an offer was made and they accepted that, so um, we'll be working with Jason and Marilyn over there to incorporate them in. Um, I don't know the date that they're starting yet. And I did want to just let you, Joanne Brandt, who has been with us for the county and over in the HR department for twenty-three years. She retired yesterday, um, so we had a nice luncheon for her, the HR staff last week. And then yesterday, we just, we had sent out an email the day before just saying if anyone wanted to stop by and see her. And we had some cookies and another cake for her, so she was sent off very nicely. I am going to miss her terribly because she had the institutional knowledge of any personnel file or document that you needed from twenty, thirty years ago. She was our go-to person and could find it very quickly for us. So, that is a loss for us, but I wish her very much the best. Um, we did go up to Merrimack County, um, I am very appreciative of the um, director, Mary Ann there and the former executive director, Mary Jane Walker, she is a state legislator. She was very helpful, very informative, they are a nonprofit, so it makes a big difference between for-profit and nonprofit. It really was an eye-opener to understand the differences between the two. Um, they are not a money-making organization by any means. Um, so they um, they run bare bones as far as the financial piece to that. But they do offer a significant service to the community, the greater community and those that work at Rocky, uh, excuse me, Merrimack County. So, um, very nice they have offered just to, you know, allow us to ask for the questions and stuff like that. So, that's nice that they'll uh, be there if we have any questions as we go forward in this. But that was what has happened and we do have another visit in two weeks and that'll be over Easter sales. And I have confirmed that they are a nonprofit uh, daycare center as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison. Jason, Edry.
Good morning, everybody. As you talked about fentanyl rises, this coming in this morning, this NPR, the North Country is getting hammered with uh, fentanyl right now and it's explosion up there, so uh, they're gonna be using a lot of resources coming up too, so it is back on the radar. Monday starts the hundred and twentieth um, Corrections Academy for next five weeks. And we'll also have to report, um, we started distributing this past week, um, Narcan pouches and Narcan to every correctional officer, which will be part of their duty uniform. As a standard, so that started this past week. Beyond that, we're still continuing to try to hire and as it is a lot, like I said last week, a lot of IT projects, a lot of maintenance projects going on, building, Officer Evans is around here, uh, running around a lot, trying to get different things done between paying next door, painting here, grinding floors, you name it, we have a lot of stuff going on, so it's um, all hands on deck and appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Pat Conway. Morning, Pat.
Morning, everybody. Um, things are going well here, we're really busy. I think that's sort of what I report every week, but we are really busy here. Part of that, obviously, is the drug crisis, um, that is, is getting worse unfortunately with folks dying. We're actually trying a sale of a controlled drug with death resulting this week here in the Superior Court. Um, Attorney Rusty Chadwick and Attorney John Goodlander are prosecuting that case, so um, keep your fingers crossed that we win, there actually was um, no autopsy performed in that case by the medical examiner's office. So, this is the first case here that we've tried where there's been no autopsy. There are toxic, uh, college, uh, um, blood testing basically that found that there were drugs in the system. But typically, we, we want autopsies done because that can rule out any other cause of death. Um, so this is the first one that we've tried without an autopsy. I don't know if any other county has tried one of these cases without an autopsy in the past. Um, but I think we have, we have good evidence, we actually have a video of the person sadly overdosing, um, because there were home cameras. But anyway, long story short, that case is being tried, I'm proud of my staff and hopefully, we'll be able to get a guilty verdict in that case. Um, but that's just one example of the cases that we're working here on here in the office. We have one attorney uh, starting next week. She comes to us from Pennsylvania, she's got about six years of experience. She's prosecuted sexual assault cases and child sexual abuse image cases, so she is um, really experienced. And we're looking forward to having her take on some of those bigger cases on that, you know, we deal with here. So, other than that, um, that's pretty much it.
Very good. So, Pat, we're gonna be, we're gonna have you in one of the non-publics. Are you under time constraints today?
No, I'm not.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so um, I can line those up, but uh, I'm gonna go to the Sheriff's Department.
Uh, good morning, uh, nothing really new to report, uh, but we do, we did ask for a walk-in on something, so. Yeah, just if, if you guys want to address it after all the department head updates or if you want to take it now. Uh, I've reached out to Leila yesterday and I know I have reached out to you directly, Commissioner Chiricello.
Yes. Yeah, so it's on the agenda, so um, yeah, we'll take care of that. Um, yeah, and then I'm gonna, yes, Commissioner Coyle.
I was just gonna say, Leila's right on it, she told us about it, we have it, it's updated, our internal agenda got updated.
We appreciate it.
Um, I'm gonna ask Leila, if she has anything that she wants to broadcast. Nothing at the moment, okay. Julie's here, so I don't know, Julie, do you want to say anything?
Well, I could say that next payroll is going to include the motivate me wellness incentives from Cigna. So, we've been getting a lot of calls from employees asking when that's gonna happen, so just so everyone knows, it's gonna be next payroll.
Okay, awesome. Alright, so now we're gonna take care of that walk-in and grant application.
So, I'm uh, with respect to the grant application, I move to approve the application for the Spikes K nine creature ballistic vest grant in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
So, you have to do a crowdfunding?
Yes, that, and uh, so, and the reason we did this is a walk-in is uh, the deputy found the program and I said, oh, great, get all the information together, bring it to me. He brought me a completed submitted application that he had already sent in electronically, I'm like, oh, we put the cart before the horse on this. Um, but yes, it, one of their requirements is because you do, they, they expect you to just do a crowdfunding page. But you don't, there's no requirement of how much you have to raise, they just try to do it to offset their costs for their national program. Um, but even if, if your crowdfunding only resulted in like a three hundred dollar raise, they'll still pay the entire balance of the, the vest.
I saw that, I was just thinking more about, is there, do you have to like vet the page through legal or anything, just to make sure it's like?
I looked at the website that, that we used to do it, I didn't see any conflicts for any of the stuff that, that we deal with. Um, it just seems very basic and straightforward and they're just asking it to, a link and then people, if they wish, they can uh, like friends and family. We can ask them to post it on their social media pages if they want to donate to it.
Okay.
Uh, and I just said, I, I asked about the, you know, the second dog and the response I got from the major was, which makes sense, is that dog's still growing. So, they can't fit it with the armor at this point where.
Yeah, and once the second dog's fully grown, we'd apply for him as well.
Yeah, okay. So, on the motion, Commissioner Goddard.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, walk-in inmate administrative transfer.
I move to approve an inmate administrative transfer dated August ninth, twenty twenty-three, transferring one inmate from Carroll County Department of Corrections pursuant to New Hampshire RSA thirty dash B colon twenty-one as recommended by the superintendent.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? None on the motion, Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, we're onto public comment, anybody?
New business, please.
Now, where's, oh, yeah, new business. New business?
Thank you. Um, I have two other concerns with the contract that we have with Harvey. Construction is not being uh, fulfilled, uh, unless I'm unaware of it. Have we received the monthly report? From Harvey Construction? This is the third payment that we make to them and I haven't seen a monthly report yet. Has anybody else seen one and would like to give it to me? I guess I'll assume the silence means that they haven't uh, provided that. Specifically in that contract, our contract.
Hold on, Commissioner Coyle wanted to.
Oh.
Say something on that.
Well, I mean, we're getting the weekly warrants and the minutes. What specifically? I mean, that's more detail, that, they're giving us more than we have in the.
No, then, let me, let me explain to you. In the contract, it says specifically that they will provide us a monthly report. The construction manager shall record the progress of the project on a monthly basis or otherwise agreed to by the owner, the construction manager shall submit written progress reports. Also, under con, cost control, uh, the construction managers shall identify variances between actual and estimated costs and report the variances to the owner and architect and shall provide this information in its monthly reports. I'm requesting that we communicate with Harvey that they should be preparing a monthly report for us that is an executive summary that says what's going on uh, with the project. It's, it, we've already negotiated this and I'm just asking that uh, they fulfill their contract. As far as I'm concerned, at this moment, they're outside of what they've agreed to and I'd like them to get caught up on that.
Do you have a second?
Yes, I, I, I also, relative to the contract, um, Harvey did not bid the solar farm. And in the contract, it says, the construction manager will bid all subcontracts to pre-qualified subcontractors unless instructed by the owner. Now, we as the owner, to the best of my knowledge, have not instructed Harvey to uh, not bid this project. I've looked through all of the minutes from the past year, uh, and I saw nothing that uh, indicated that. I did have a conversation with one of the managers at Harvey a couple months ago who said, they indicated to me that he had a letter that uh, instructed him to not bid this part of the project, uh, but I, that was never produced to me. I asked Leila to uh, review documents to see if uh, there was any other communication to that uh, knowledge and I believe that, well, she, there's no record of a letter that was sent from the commissioners to, to Harvey Construction. So, I'm looking for evidence at how they had, um, how they came to the conclusion of not bidding when they agreed again in the contract to bid every subcontract.
With all due respect, Commissioner Goddard, we have been over this. This is like, we've been over this a number of times. This is with respect to some of the, this taught, the decision to go with solar and um, and in the process of putting that contract under Harvey, we had a long meeting about that and that all occurred uh, before you were um, elected commissioner. So, there was some discussion about this, we, um, to the extent that, just as you identified earlier in this meeting, you were like, let's support Rockingham County businesses by going with Memories. One of the considerations in, in that going with, um, going with revision is that they were a local company. We have discussed their rates, in fact, I ran a calculation about rates that they're charging us. And um, from someone who, who worked at revision and could calculate out kilowatts back. And it was right in the competitive market of where we want to be. And that revision is known, although not a sole source, they're almost like a sole source here because they are the organization that does all the large municipal solar arrays in this state and in this region. So, I am not sure why we keep revisiting the same issues. This is not new business, certainly because we have discussed this, we came to a conclusion about this and now you're bringing it up. And to the extent that you're dissatisfied with what decisions the previous board made, I, I, I don't know where to go any further on that.
Listen, Goddard, okay, I, I appreciate all of those reasons that you gave and um, I, I, I have no particular problem with revision, I suspect. And everything that I've learned about them is that they're an outstanding company. They're in South Portland, Maine, just for the record, they're not a local Rockingham County, but that's really not my issue. My issue is very specifically that we have contracted with Harvey and they have agreed to bid all subcontracts unless they have been instructed by the county and I have no record of the instruction that the county gave to Harvey to tell them to not bid a ten million dollar portion of this job. And I'm looking for that instruction, I'm looking for, or in, and if we don't have instruction, then they're again non-compliant in their contract. We have no, I have no knowledge of a competitive bid. I don't know if revision charged us more or less than what somebody else would judge. We have no competitive uh, information and I'm looking to protect the taxpayers. And I'm, this isn't just my opinion, I'm trying to get them to comply with the contract. So, if we've given that permission, I'd like to see evidence of that permission. That's my issue.
Okay, further comments? If not, we're gonna move along. Commissioner Coyle, do you have anything on the new business?
I don't.
Okay. You got anything else?
No.
Okay, so now we're on to public comments. Uh, anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing no one raising their hands, we're gonna, we're gonna move on then, so thank you very much, everybody, uh, appreciate it. Hope you all have a good day, we're gonna go to non-public. How many non-publics do we have? I know we have one with um, with Pat Conway, so let's. So, we have two total?
Jason Smith.
Alright, Jason, do you, are you under any kind of constraints, Jason?
It's fine, Pat can go first.
So, we'll, we'll uh, text you when we're ready and we'll, 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 we'll do that for us, so thank you, everybody. Uh, I'll take a motion for, to go to non-public.
I move to enter into non-public, we're sent to ninety-one A colon three, uh, with respect to personnel matters.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle? Commissioner Goddard?
Yes.
I vote yes, so we're gonna keep in. Uh, we're gonna keep in Allison.
Back in public session after being in non-public, um, with respect to the non-public sessions, the, uh, second, um, the second topic we took up, I move to seal those minutes indefinitely could be for two reasons, because it affects the reputation of someone other than this, uh, board and it could render a proposed action ineffective.
Second, motion has been made and seconded, uh, on, on motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Alright, topic one.
Um, I make a motion with respect to the topic, one, we're not moving to, I'm not going to seal those minutes, but I do move to approve the continuation of stipends for legal assistance, um, through the entire fiscal year twenty twenty-four with, um, retroactively applied from the start of the fiscal year and, um, and as recommended by the senior, I mean, by County Attorney Conway and the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, some motions been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Uh, I just wanna add that, um, by doing this, there's no increase to the budget uh, to the taxpayers and, uh, we'll, we'll be moving forward, I just wanna make that note. So, uh, further discussion, if not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Foyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, and I think that's all we have in front of us. Allison, you have something?
No, thank you so much, we'll get the PCNs and the, uh, MOU ready to go and over to Bill Cahill.
Okay, Commissioner Foyle?
I move to adjourn.
Motion adjourned and seconded, although maybe say hi, hi, we are adjourned, thank you, everybody. Joy of April, Allison.